I would like to call the Monday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, meeting of the Blue Springs Planning Commission to order. If I could ask everyone to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome this evening to everyone that's joining us and those watching us from home. I will read through the agenda for the evening. Item one will be the consent agenda. Item two is a public hearing for the rezoning of Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms. Item three is a public hearing for amended planned unit development concept plan for Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms. Item four is a preliminary plat for Earhart Estate at Chapman Farms. Item five is other business. Item six is adjournment. So the first two items, or, I'm sorry. So the first item is the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Banks, second from Commissioner Phillips. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next two items are going to be public hearings. I'm going to read through the procedure for a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. I will ask for exhibits from our city attorney. Staff will make their presentation. Then the applicant will be giving their opportunity to make their presentation. I will ask for witnesses in favor. Then I will ask to hear from witnesses opposed. And then I'll have questions and discussion from the commissioners. And then I'll close the public hearing and we'll consider for a vote. I would ask if you're going to speak as a witness in favor or opposed. You try to limit your comments to five minutes. Please keep your comments, questions, relevant to the review criteria, which Mr. Mallon will be covering in his presentation on what the review criteria are that we are to look at. After I've heard witnesses in favor and witnesses opposed, I'll give the applicant an opportunity to answer those questions as well before I bring it back up here for the commissioners to ask questions on the record. And then I'll close the public hearing and we'll consider the items for a vote. So I'm going to open both public hearings. So we'll hear the two public hearings simultaneously as well as the preliminary plat. Items, so it's items two, three, and four. And then we will consider each item separately after the public hearings are closed. So with that, I'm going to open the public hearing rezoning RZ oh five dash two oh dash seven three two eight. And the public hearing amended planned unit development concept plan, PUDC oh five two oh seven three two nine. If I could get the exhibits, please.
Chairman Graham, there are a number of exhibits that I'm going to be reading into the record. And they are the same exhibits for both hearings for the rezoning and also for the planned unit development concept plan. So I'm just going to read them one, once.
Okay.
And I also want to make you aware that because staff was trying to copy as many of the emails and documents that came in late today and include them in the packet that you've received, that we had to cut that off at around four o'clock. So anything that came in after that, there was one before four o'clock that we did not, we were not able to include. Anything that came in after that is not included in this.
Okay.
It is in the city's records. And if anyone wants to view that, anything that came in after three thirty or four can contact the city tomorrow. We should have it available. Okay, so the, um, I offer into the evidence the following exhibits. One, staff report with attachments. Two, application with attachments. Three, affidavit of publication in the examiner on May twenty-three, two thousand and twenty. Four, one hundred eighty-five foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title Four land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Eight, two thousand and fourteen Comprehensive Plan by reference. Nine, email from Sarah Davis in opposition dated six eight, two thousand and twenty. Ten, letter from John and Gwen Straight in opposition dated six three, two thousand and twenty. Eleven, email from Liz Torkowski in opposition dated seven eight, two thousand and twenty. Twelve, email from Tom and Dorothy Biszkow, I'm sorry if I mispronounce that. In opposition, opposition dated seven eight, two thousand and twenty. Fourteen, email from Jennifer Conrad in opposition, in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Fifteen, email from John Stoltz in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Sixteen, email from Nikki Snyder in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Seventeen, email from Tom Leath in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Eighteen, email from Melissa Black in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Nineteen, email from Dwight and Sheila Fisher in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Twenty, email from Jennifer Morgan in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Twenty-one, email from Suzanne Ward in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Twenty-two, email from Krista Jo Freeman in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Twenty-three, email from Lawrence Ballsbury in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Twenty-four, email from Connie and Dennis Blevins in opposition dated seven ten, two thousand and twenty. Those are the exhibits that we received in time to get them, I missed that, I apologize, to get them on the agenda. And I did skip thirteen, email from Terry and Jeff Bauer in opposition dated seven nine, two thousand and twenty. I'm going to list several more, and they are all emails. I didn't include whether they were in favor or opposition. I just have the names of the people they came from. Twenty-five, Jennifer Meens, M.E.E.N.T.S. Twenty-six, Amber Arbuckle. Twenty-seven, Kathy Chapman. Twenty-eight, Eric Frye. Twenty-nine, Joshua Luttrall, L.U.T.T.R.A.L.L. Thirty, Christine Hunt. Thirty-one, Gordon and Brenda Clevenger. Thirty-two, Kathleen Edwards. Thirty-three, Jessica Agnelli, A.G.N.E.L.L.Y. Thirty-four, Doctors Todd and Ellen Jones. Thirty-five, Sean Householder. Thirty-six, Charles Brooks. Thirty-seven, Todd Ubele, I'll spell it, U.E.B.E.L.E. Thirty-eight, Corey and Rebecca Cornet. Thirty-nine, Zach Goff. Forty, Linza, Lindsey Rimal, R.I.M.E.L. Forty-one, Brianna and Adam Gosage, G.O.S.S.A.G.E. Forty-two, Thad Krawczek, K.R.A.W.C.Z.Y.K. Forty-three, Matt Kreisel, K.R.E.I.S.E.L. And forty-four, Real Law, Jackie Maloney. And those are all the exhibits I have on the record today.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Mallon?
Thank you, Chairman Graham, and planning commissioners. This is a request.
No.
I don't think it's on. Is it on now?
I believe.
Yes. Hello?
Yes.
There we go, I'll speak up. This is a request by the applicant to rezone twenty-nine point two zero acres approximately for a portion of an overall thirty-nine point zero four acre property to request rezoning and approval of a PUD concept plan and preliminary plat. The proposed rezoning area, again, is only twenty-nine of the thirty-nine overall acres. The proposed rezoning is from the existing SF seven PU DRO or Single Family Planned Unit Development Restricted Overlay Zoning District and the Central Business Planned Unit Development Restricted Overlay Zoning District to a MF ten or Multi-Family ten, P, Planned Unit Development and Restricted Overlay. The MF ten is classified under the code as being a Low Density Multi-Family Unit Development. On the map here, you'll see the area bounded in the black and white striping. That is the area that is proposed to be rezoned to the MF ten PU DRO. And again, on this map, which shows the surrounding zoning, this is the rezoning boundary highlighted in black and white. As I mentioned, the P, the property is currently zoned SF seven RO or SF seven PU DRO. And the corner at Mason School and Seven is Central Business PU DRO. Subject site, again, or to acquaint everybody, is located at the southwest corner of Mason School Road and Seven Highway within the Chapman Farms overall development. The surrounding zoning is SF seven PU DRO to the west. General Business Commercial to the south. Generally, Service Office, Service and Office in the magenta color, Restricted Overlay. And Service Office again, and General Business across to the east. And then to the north, the zoning is MF fourteen, which is a moderate density, multi-family zoning with the Planned Unit Development and the RO as well. This next map shows the thirty-nine acre site, which is proposed for the Planned Unit Development Concept Plan. And it covers all of the area encompassed by this project, including the portion that is proposed to be rezoned. And this is the same boundary for the preliminary plat. And this map just shows that area again overlaid on the existing zoning surrounding the property. The proposal for the entire project, well, let me back up one. The rezoning area is not the same as the concept plan area because the proposed western half of the project, roughly ten acres to the west of this rezoning line, is not being proposed to be rezoned. It's proposed to stay SF seven PU DRO in order to accommodate the site plan that they show, which is going to be for single-family detached housing. And so the zoning does not need to be changed for that portion of the PUD concept plan area. This is the proposed plan for the property. It includes, again, to acquaint ourselves, Mason School Road is running horizontally across the screen. Seven Highway is running vertically on the right-hand side. And this is the proposed PUD concept plan. The proposed PUD concept plan includes two hundred and fifty-six unit apartment complex. And that includes garden-style apartments to the north of Brookside Drive with a clubhouse and pool and amenities throughout, as well as an apartment complex, all considered one apartment complex, with townhome-style apartments to the south of Brookside Drive. So this is the proposed two hundred and fifty-six apartment units. And then the proposed single-family homes are located along the western side of the project, adjacent to the existing single-family homes in the estates of Chapman Farms. And there are seventeen proposed single-family detached lots in that portion of the concept plan area. And those lots are proposed to be age-restricted. Those lots are proposed to have a minimum square footage of eighteen hundred square feet, which is comparable to the minimum square footage required for the plat of the estates of Chapman Farms. Again, the, for the apartments, a total of two hundred and fifty-six units over approximately twenty-six point two one acres, which is a density of nine point seven seven dwelling units an acre, which fits within the proposed MF ten zoning. The single-family lots are seventeen units on approximately eight point four one acres at a density of approximately two units an acre, which is well within the density allowed for the SF seven zoning. As I mentioned, there are two different styles of apartments contained within this singular apartment complex. The garden style, which are two-story walk-up apartment-type buildings, and the townhome style, which are fourplexes. That's the second type to comprise the apartment complex project, excuse me, wake the computer up. And then those two building, or that building type, and then the other building type proposed is the detached house neighborhood lot, which is proposed for the single-family lots. In terms of access for the site, there are five access points, well, six access points throughout the entire subdivision for the overall project. For the apartment complex, the primary entrance to the north side is on Mason School Road. And this is the primary entrance as designed by the applicant with two access points on the Mason School Road. Off of Brookside Drive, there would be a third access into the apartments on the north side, which is a singular access that would run by the pool and clubhouse and up into the remaining buildings. And then there would be an access drive to the south, to the townhome portion of the apartment project. Further to the west, there are two accesses off of Brookside Drive, one to serve the single-family lots to the north and one to sing, serve the single-family lots to the south. In terms of transportate, those are the access points. The Brookside Drive will have sidewalks on both sides of the street. Mason School will have a sidewalk adjacent to the project. There's an existing sidewalk along Seven Highway, I believe. And the lots internal on the single-family side, I believe there's sidewalks on one side of the street there, as required by code. But I'll let the developer speak to that in a little bit more fashion there. The next thing I'd like to present is the open space throughout the project. Let me get to the open space plan here. It does appear that there are sidewalks on both sides of the street for the single-family lots. This is the open space plan for the overall project. Open space is defined and out, or regulated by the building type. Per the apartment complex building type, the area that's zoned MF ten would be required a minimum of forty percent open space, of which ten percent must be active open space. That would be a requirement of approximately ten and a half acres. The proposed open space for the apartment section, which includes this natural drainage area, is approximately eleven point nine nine acres. In addition, as part of that, the, the active open space, they are proposing a pool and clubhouse, walking trails, a dog play area, and another children's playground area down here on the south side of Brookside Drive. For the single-family or SF seven portion, they're required to have ten percent open space that is active, or just ten percent open space, I apologize, for a total of zero point four acres. And they provided over four point four three acres, much of which is bound in this area, this tract that has a walking trail to serve it. So staff feels that this proposed open space system complies with the requirements of the UDC. And again, includes a club, poolhouse, playgrounds, dog park, walking path, and other amenities. Parking is also, again, based on the, the unit or the residential type. The, any multi-family apartment units that are one-bedroom require one point five spaces per unit. If they are two-bedroom, they are two spaces per unit. And the clubhouse is required to provide twenty-seven spaces based upon its square footage. So a total of four hundred and twenty-three parking spaces are required. And a total of four hundred and ninety-two are provided within the site plan. The two spaces per unit for the townhome style will, one will be provided within the garage. And the other would be a tandem space in the driveway leading up to that garage. The parking for the single-family lots would be accommodated through the garage parking and the driveway parking. So staff feels that it meets that requirement. As part of the PUD concept plan, the applicant has requested three modifications to the underlying UDC regulations. The first is a reduction in the front building setback skewed along the, along Mason School Road, which would require a front setback of fifty feet for a collector road. They have requested a reduction of that to, I believe, forty feet, or some, a little bit less than fifty feet. I don't have that number right in front of me, I apologize. But they have requested that in order to allow those buildings to be shifted closer to the street and further away from the existing residential housing to the west. The second modification is for the single-family home portion along the west to allow for lot sizes that are larger than twelve thousand square feet under the detached house neighborhood lots standard. Those lots are only allowed to be twelve hundred square feet maximum in size. And they have requested lots seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen to be larger than that twelve hundred square feet. So that is a modification they're requesting under the PUD. And then finally, under the minimum lot width for the detached house neighborhood lot, they would like to reduce that for lots four and five in the northern portion due to the location on a cul-de-sac and the inability to meet that forty feet. We get this request quite often for those cul-de-sac lots because they're not able to meet that lot width at the front of the lot. But the lot gets substantially bigger as it fans out from the street. So staff believes that these concept plan modifications are justified to help move the apartment buildings closer to the collector and arterial streets, which helps improve the urban design by having buildings located closer to those roads and away from the existing single-family homes a little bit further. And that the SF, single-family seven modifications are justified based upon the lot sizes and the fact of those lots being on cul-de-sac, which is seen commonly throughout residential subdivisions. The architectural character for the proposed apartment buildings on the, well, all of them, both the garden style and the townhome style, all utilize four-sided architecture with a variety of roof elements and building projections. The architecture is in compliance with the UDC for multifamily design standards. The garden-style apartments utilize a mix of masonry, both brick and stone, columns, vertical elements, roof breaks. Other materials include cementitious siding and asphalt shingled roofs. The four-plex townhomes also include a variety of materials, including masonry, cementitious siding, and asphalt shingled roofs. And the buildings are further articulated with trellis features and shutters on the second-story window to help break up the massing of the front elevation. The single-family house designs that have been submitted are of good quality. The city does not have minimum design standards for single-family homes. However, these houses provide a mix of both front and side loaded garage, just ranch-style homes, and many have the ability to be walkout or daylight basements. Again, utilizing a mix of masonry materials, siding, cementitious siding, and asphalt shingles. Final building design for all three of those buildings would be done through the PUD final plan slash site plan design review. The preliminary plat for the project lays out the proposed lots and any necessary easements required for the development of the property, as well as the street trees. This is the preliminary plat. There are proposed to be one lot to cover the garden-style apartments on the north side of Brookside Drive, a second lot to house the townhome-style apartments on the south side, and then seventeen single-family lots for the detached houses. There's also a number of open space tracks distributed throughout to allow for common open space and to place the amenities in the project. The phasing for this project has changed since the last time it came before the planning commission. At this time, the developer is proposing to develop the project in one phase with all of it going in at the same time. And they can speak to that a little bit more as to the reasons why they're proposing to do it that way. The preliminary plat was reviewed against section, or UDC Section four three oh five oh, and they have submitted everything they were needing to provide. The lot sizes meet the lot size requirements. Easements are being provided that are necessary to serve it from a sewer, drainage, water, to Water District thirteen, as well as the appropriate access points for that preliminary plat. A final plat must still be approved and recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits within this development. That is staff's presentation of the project itself. I will run through a little bit more here real quick, but leave the bulk of the presentation to the applicant. This is a view of the project and a three-D rendering of what it would look like from the, looking northwest from Highway seven and Brookside Drive with the garden-style apartments here in the northeast corner of the project. The four-plex townhome-style apartments on the south side of Brookside Drive. The natural drainage area that would separate the two different styles of buildings. And then the single-family homes on the western side adjacent to the estates of Chapman Farms. This is the proposed architecture for the garden-style two-story buildings. Again, utilizing a mixture of stone and brick with siding and shingles and some faux chimneys to help break up the roof line. This is a proposed architecture for the four-story, or for the four-plex townhomes. Again, utilizing siding, masonry, two different kinds of siding, and asphalt shingle for the roofs and the design elements with the trellises over the garage and the shutters that I mentioned previously. And this is the conceptual architecture for the single-family homes. Again, utilizing siding, considerable amount of masonry, and offering both a side-load garage option as well as a front-load garage option. This is a conceptual rendering of the clubhouse, which matches the architecture of all four of the buildings and is compatible with the development as a whole. That is all of staff's presentation on the project itself. At this time, I'd like to go through the review criteria under which staff reviews each application and then provide how staff feels that it meets that criteria. So bear with me here, we have quite a bit of these. But I'll try to get through them as concisely as possible. For the rezoning, the unified development code criteria for rezoning states that the rezoning must be considered according to the following criteria. The first is that the application is in accordance with the comprehensive plan and any official plan under the guidance of the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that this rezoning is in accordance with the two thousand and fourteen Comprehensive Plan, which had a designation for this property of high-density residential in the area along the northeast corner of the project, where the two-story garden-style apartments are, and a mixed-density residential for the remainder of the project. And staff believes that this project, this rezoning, is in keeping with that, with those designations. Number two, that the application furthers the intent of the proposed zoning districts and supports that of any abutting zoning districts. Staff believes that the base MF ten and SF seven zoning districts are not being substantially modified from the UDC as part of this rezoning request, except for those modifications being requested as part of that PUD concept plan. Proposed transition from the low-density MF ten multi-family residential from the east side of the project to the single-family residential on the west side of the project provides a transition from a very busy corridor along Seven Highway that will only get busier as time goes on and the existing single-family homes in the estates of Chapman Farms. Third is that the precedence that might result from approval or denial of the application and the possible effects of such precedence on the character of the area in terms of building form, site design, and other development patterns. Staff believes that this request to rezone will allow residential land uses to continue to be located along the west side of Seven Highway, which is where a lot of the residential has been developed. The east side of Seven Highway down in this portion of the Chapman Farms project is designated as commercial and has yet to develop. The proposed rezoning allows for a mix of housing types and products all within a singular development, next, in close proximity to a major arterial corridor. And again, provides a transition in intensity of land uses. And that the addition of more residential units to this area of the city has the potential to support the development of adjacent commercially-zoned property. Four, the compliance of any proposed development with the requirements of the UDC. Again, staff finds that this property will be able to meet the requirements of the Unified Development Code, except as proposed to be modified under the concept plan. Number five, this ability of the city or other governmental agencies to provide services that might be required if the application were approved. Staff believes that this zoning would not, or rezoning would not reduce the ability of the city or other governmental agencies to provide services, facilities, or programs, including water, sewer, fire protection, police service, and school capacity. Have all, and the developer can speak to their conversations with those entities, including fire, police, and the school district. But the property is able to be served through the Neighborhood Improvement District, or commonly referred to as the NID, for sanitary sewer capacity. And there is existing storm sewer capacity in the area. And there's adequate roads and sidewalk infrastructure to serve the projects on Mason School and on Seven Highway. The sixth is the The sixth is the, six criteria is the effect of approval on the condition or value of property in the city or in the vicinity, including the likelihood of surrounding areas to be developed in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan. Staff does recognize there's a potential for some property values to be affected by the proposed rezoning. There could be some negative impacts of property values adjacent to properties directly to the west. However, staff cannot determine if they will absolutely be negatively impact without a full review by an appraisal once the project is built. Staff also reviews not only the impact on directly adjacent properties, but also the impact on all surrounding properties, and the development investments on this vacant land may have a positive impact on surrounding commercially-zoned land to the east across Seven Highway, and the development of this property will not negatively impact adjacent properties to be developed according to the Comprehensive Plans, which again includes mixed-density neighborhood and, or mixed-density neighborhood land uses and commercial land uses in and around this area along the south Seven Highway corridor. The seventh criteria is the requested zoning change is justified by a change in condition since the existing zoning was designated. Staff does believe that this requested zoning is supportable by a change in condition since the existing zoning was put into place. Staff believes that there are currently a number of, there currently are numerous vacant commercially-zoned properties along the south Seven Highway corridor on both the east and west sides of Seven Highway. Not only in this direct location, but as you head further north from this project along Seven Highway corridor, there's a lot of commercially-zoned land that just hasn't been developed at this time. It suggests that the demand for commercial development in this part of the city is not as high as the property is zoned to allow. Therefore, staff believes that since this original Chapman Farms PUD concept plan was approved, that the addition of more retail units in this area is a justifiable change to not only react to the changing market and economy, but also to help infuse the area with residential units to attract and support future commercial development on that vacant commercially-zoned land. The eighth is the consistency of the application with other adopted policies of the city, and staff finds that this proposal is consistent with that and the recommendation of professional staff, which I will address here in a moment. The PUD concept plan review criteria, again, I'll go through these as concisely as possible. The first criteria is that the plan represents an improvement over what could have been accomplished through strict application of otherwise applicable base zoning district standards. Based upon the comp plan, staff believes that this plan does represent an approval over the traditional UDC development standards. That is allows three different housing styles and a singular, singular development to be coordinated through similar design elements, architectural character and other unifying elements such as amenities to the residence to tie the entire project together, and that that will help or will serve as to be an improvement over what could have been developed if they were all three developed disjointly or by three separate developers. Number two is that the benefits from any flexibility in the standards promote the general public health, safety, and welfare. Staff does not believe that the proposed modifications are being requested for the flexibility would negatively impact any public health, safety, or welfare. The lot or the different modification requests would only move the buildings a little bit closer to the Arterio Streets and Collector Streets to move the buildings further away from the existing single-family and allow for larger lot sizes for a few of the single-family homes, and also to accommodate some of the lots along the cul-de-sac. So, staff does believe that the benefits and flexibility would not negatively impact the public health, safety, and welfare. The third is that regarding the benefits of flexibility, they meet or exceed the intent statements for the base zoning district, and staff does believe that they do. Again, they are helping to move the buildings closer to the Arterio Streets, away from additional, or the existing residents, and that the other two standards for the single-family homes, one of which is actually in excess of what the code require, and that the other is just adjusting to those lots being located along the cul-de-sacs. That the plan reflects generally accepted and sound planning and urban design principles with respect to the Comprehensive Plan, and that staff finds that the proposed project does utilize transitional zoning to step down scale of intensity of development from the Arterio corridor, concentrating the apartments to the east side of the site, allows those to be set off from these existing single-family homes. The proposed project maintains and addresses the existing drainage way to use that as a buffer and separation of the land uses as you transition from the east to the west, and then the additional step-down for the single-family homes along the west side is complementary to the existing single-family homes. The six criteria is that the plan meets all of the review criteria for zoning map amendment, which I addressed previously, and the staff recommendation, or the recommendation of staff, that's the seven. The preliminary plat review criteria are technical in nature, and those are outlined in Chapter 406 of the Unified Development Code and address access, lot sizes, easements required, and things of that nature. And staff reviewed this request against that, and staff believes that it does meet those criteria. Is there something I, do I need to address something? Okay, sorry. With that, staff reviewed the, again, the rezoning criteria, the planned unit development, concept plan criteria, and the preliminary plat criteria as outlined in the Unified Development Code, and staff finds that those, those requests for the rezoning, the PUD concept plan, and the preliminary plat are consistent with those review criteria as noted for each type of application, and as staff recommends approval of the rezoning application, recommends approval of the PUD concept application subject to the seven conditions outlined in the staff report, and recommends approval of the preliminary plat application subject to the thirteen conditions outlined in the staff report. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions before having the applicant step forward to make their presentation.
Okay. Do I have any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Malin?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Field.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Malin, have you received information from the fire and school districts that they can adequately service this particular development?
The city staff was forwarded emails, that email correspondence that the developer had with those three entities, and in those emails, which the developer can address, all three of those stated that they could hold, that they had capacity to accommodate this development.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Malin? All right, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Would the applicant like to make their presentation? I'll need you to be sworn in and then state your name and address for the record, please.
All right. Yes, I do. Good evening, commissioners. Chairman, I'm Thomas Nolte with Nolte &amp; Associate Architects and Land Planners in Overland Park, Kansas. My address is 9400 Reed's Road, and I'm here as part of this development team for the Airheart Estates of Chapman Farms. I'd like to introduce some of the members of our development team. First of all, Travis Kramer here is our applicant owner. Second is Dana Ghee, our civil engineer with Lamp Rierson, and Jackie Maloney, which is our attorney, and also Tom Whitehead, our construction manager. Last time, we were in front of you on Monday, February 24th, we presented in a public hearing a request for rezoning, and we've received and reviewed the staff report that was issued, and we are in agreement with it. We have no suggestions or changes that we care to make at this time, and we also adopt the agreement on any stipulations that were laid out. I'd like to thank Mike for, and the Blue Springs planning staff for their skillfully writing the staff report, which we're pretty happy with. Every recommendation that they made was for approval, so can't get any better than that. But they guided us through this process, and it was, as you can tell, all of these documents, and this is a tremendous project that we are bringing forward. So, there was a lot of effort on the staff's part to help us understand what the intent of the city plan had in mind, all the way from the idiosyncrasies that are involved in the, in the development review, all the way up to the CUP and the PUD, along with the comments that we received. And we appreciate this diligence and detail associated with this very complicated process on this application. We're pleased to have the opportunity to make this presentation again, but there are some changes that we bring tonight that we were, that are now reflected on the plan. And this comes from our listening to the residents as they came to the meeting that we held, and they also came to the last meeting, and they had comments. We listened to them, some of them made sense, and we incorporated them. There are also additional conversations we had with elected officials and staff, not to mention that the comments we received last time from the planning commission. And I'd like to point out just a couple of these updates, if I may. Number one, there's still three parts to this plan. There is the garden apartments, there's the townhome apartments, and there's the single-family residential component. And as pointed out, I think first, that this is a single-phase project. And the second item is there are seventeen lots available on the west property line, and fifteen of these seventeen home lots have the ability to have a walkout. And we're taking advantage of the topography there. The fronts of the houses will face west along a single-loaded street. There's only houses on one side. On the west side, the property line, there's a lot of extensive landscaping planned there, as shown on the plans. The third item is the townhome area. We've also added some amenities, one being the addition and realignment of the trails. That happened on all the sites, in fact. We reworked the trails. I think Mike pointed out the open space requirements. I think we've exceeded them in every way. We've also added a playground, and of course, that's available to all the neighborhoods. The major item that was changed, though, deals with the apartment buildings. They have gone from a three-story structure to a two-story structure, and the count has changed from three hundred and six garden-style apartments to two hundred and twenty-four. So, it's practically a reduction of about a third. So, with that reduction, we were able to open up more ground, because we have the requirement for less parking. So, we were able to add some enclosed garages. As you can see, those are the long buildings out in the parking lot, so we think that's a real positive amenity. We always had garages, though, for the townhouses. So, now we have some garages that are available for the garden apartments. We also have a lot more interconnectivity between the parking lots. We used to have some dead-end-type parking lots. Now, you can go through the end and go to the next one and the next one, so they're all interconnected. So, we feel that that's a big plus on the design side. There are lots of others, but those are the main issues. I think one of the top items, I don't think a lot of people have problems with single-family homes, and they didn't have a lot of problems with the townhomes, but we were at a medium-density with the garden apartments. We weren't high-density, they were medium-density, and now they are low-density. And we're going to probably talk a little bit more about those issues as it applies to the comp plan. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Jackie.
Good evening.
I need you to swear in, yeah.
Yes.
And then state your name and address as well, please.
Jackie Maloney. Address is 301 Southeast Douglas Street, Suite 201, Lee Summit, Missouri. Thank you. It's hard to think and talk with these on, this is my first time, so bear with me. Hopefully, I can get enough air in here. Okay, so, we're back. And Tom just gave you a rundown of exactly what has changed. One thing that, two things that we need to mention that have changed before moving on to some of the other items. One, the school district had a no-tax-increase bond election, and that passed. As part of that, renovation and addition to Mason Elementary is one of the top priority projects. So, that did pass in June, and we did have support from the school district. They were pretty confident that it would pass back when we were here last time, but that is another item that has changed. One other thing is that we have included a restriction on the single-family so that it's age-restricted, fifty or fifty-five and older, I cannot remember exactly, but it is age-restricted now. So, that wraps up some of the changes, but I, what I kept hearing last time was, why this land? Why here? Why now? And really, it comes down to a number of things. The developer, Travis Kramer, like me, this is our hometown. This is where we grew up. This is where we graduated from high school, and I live very close to this development now, but not inside the Blue Springs city limits. My parents still have businesses here. Travis still has family here. So, Blue Springs was on his radar for that, for that reason. This is his hometown. Second is looking for availability of land. The demand is, this is the hottest real estate market, especially for rental, still, even with COVID. And so, the demand, we know that there's demand for a multifamily product. Looking in Blue Springs, yes, of course, the Land Bank property is a good price. This is a good location, and it wasn't an easy process to get under contract with the Land Bank. They have their own policies and procedures and their own underwriting procedures for someone to buy property. Now, some of those procedures, there's three criteria. Let me, the planned use. The Land Bank, the Blue Springs Land Bank, knows that the planned use of this property is for multifamily development. We've been under contract since last fall. I'm not exactly sure the exact date, but the planned use is for multifamily development and other housing mixes. And as this, the Land Bank's, one of their top priorities is affordable housing for new and existing residents. So, this was obviously a match with the multifamily development plan, and this matches the Comprehensive Plan and several other plans of the city. The nature and identity of developer, I already explained who that is, and the impact on short- and long-term community development. The Comprehensive Plan calls for high-density multifamily development and mixed-density development on this site. The city just commissioned a housing study in 2019, beginning of 2019, that it was reported, talking about...
Ms. Maloney?
Yeah.
Can I interrupt you for a second? We're going to take like a five-minute break.
Sure thing.
Anybody needs a breather? Nope, you're fine. Nope, you're fine. Okay, we're going to resume the meeting, and Ms. Maloney, sorry to interrupt you, but having a little moment up here, so...
No problem.
I hate to interrupt you in the train, in your train of thought, but hopefully you can get back where you were.
It was nice for a breather and to get some water myself, because I'm getting hot in here. Okay. So I was on, why are we here? Why this land? We approached the land bank, we satisfied their criteria, their criteria and priorities for this land, which, whether it's this developer or anyone else, are providing affordable. That doesn't mean low income or Section Eight or anything. Housing that is affordable for this community. And based upon our market feasibility study, which I have copies for you right now, there is demand there for this product type, with rents starting at a thousand dollars a month and going on up from there for the apartment piece. That requires, I believe, I had all these numbers, I believe almost a forty thousand dollar a year income, just for the single-family, then going on up to seventy-five thousand dollars a year, just to qualify for our apartments. So again, these are not low income, they are affordable for the workforce here. These are an alternative to the starter home, which we all know, there is a really, really tight market for a starter home, and with construction costs the way they are, they're just, you can't, you can't build them for the same cost anymore. So anyway, we went through some public hearings with the land bank. The city manager is one of the members of the land bank. He's aware of the city's land use policies, he's aware of exactly what we had proposed on this site. We looked at the comprehensive plan, which says high-density. We looked at the city's own housing study that says there is demand, there is a lot of demand, so much demand that right now, because there's not enough supply here in Blue Springs, single-family owner occupied is getting converted to rental, because there's not enough rental product. So based on those factors, we selected this site and entered into a contract with the land bank, and then also entered into a contract with the adjacent bank-owned property. With this project, it will bring a piece of property back onto the tax rolls that has been vacant, undeveloped, no tax dollars generated on this site, costing the city money every year to carry it, and it will be hundreds of thousands of dollars. I haven't done the calculation since we reduced the apartments, but it's going to be at least near a million dollars every single year that will be added to the taxing jurisdictions So that's how we got here, and we started talking to staff. Staff supported the project, said, yes, it complies with the comprehensive plan, and in fact, we just recently did a housing study and that supports this type of product. Staff did say that, full disclosure, you're right next to a residential, single-family residential site. They're not going to like it. When does anyone like development next to their, their existing housing development by a different developer? I, I completely understand. It, it's an unknown. Are they going to actually build? Are, is it going to be what they say? Is it going to be maintained? It's uncertainty, and it's scary, because yes, this is their biggest investment. This is also his biggest investment as well. It's all in all of our best interest to make sure that this is well-maintained and developed in a way so that we can add to this community. Now I want to talk about one thing that has been brought up a couple of times, and that is the existing PUD. And the existing PUD that was adopted in 2004 is part of the whole Chapman Farms master plan. It calls for single-family for this entire site with age-restricted single-family for the site. A lot of things have changed since 2004, and the city has recognized those changes in a lot of different ways. The city in 2014 adopted the city planning commission, which I believe four of you were on the planning commission in 2014 when you, when the latest plan was approved. It, it changed the recommended land use from single-family, age-restricted, and commercial to high-density residential and mixed-density residential, not single-family. So that's the first clue that it, that the city wanted a change. Also in that comprehensive plan, it said that the city wants to reduce commercial along Seven Highway and increase multifamily. And when that was, so that was in 2014. The first owner occupied, that was in June of 2014, and that was after, I am sure, I believe the first one was in 2013, public hearings about the changes that were going to take place and all of the community feedback that's necessary. This is an ongoing process, because it's a plan that you, you adopt and follow for the next fifteen years, twenty years. And then, so that was in fourteen, and later in that year was the first sale to an owner-occupied homeowner in the estates at Chapman Farms. There were two in 2014, three in 2015, and then more each year thereafter. So what I'm trying to say is, this plan had already been approved by this commission and had been in the works and had been part of the public record when everyone purchased their homes. When all of the builders and developers purchased this property, it was already approved. And this is the plan that we relied on whenever we, whenever my client submitted a proposal to the land bank. This is the plan that we relied on when doing the feasibility study, the traffic study, the stormwater study, when paying for extensive design services and legal services. These are all of the things that, those are, those are the indicators to us that the city wants multifamily, the city wants it here. Additionally, the city in 2000, I believe fifteen, adopted a new stormwater plan, which Dan is going to have to supplement on this, and I've got it in the packet, but essentially in the, so right through the middle is considered a stream. It's a stream. And in 2015, with the adoption of a new APWA standard, the city recognizes it and has adopted it, so now there has to be a two-hundred-foot buffer on that stream. So whereas single-family development for this site, for the whole site, used to make sense, perhaps in 2004, that took out a ton of, of lots, and I've got, Mike, if you can bring up that overlay that it's in color with the PUD showing exactly the, the limits of the stormwater.
Not that one.
Page, no, thirty, it's with my narratives. So Mike is pulling up the, the old PUD. Those red lines show what the new stormwater standards do to that. And as you can see, there is a substantial number of lots that have been removed, just by virtue of the setback. In, in terms of, in terms of what else has happened? Since the implementation of the comprehensive plan, the last five years, this has been a public record, there has been no change or slowdown or diminution in value due to high-density residential or mixed-density residential. So that's, that's been there. And the city had commissioned the chat study and the land bank policies, and they all say, we want more multifamily. And the question keeps getting asked, but why here? Or we don't want it here. But you guys, the city said, we want it here, we brought it here, and now we feel like we're getting the, the response that you don't want it here. And we've, we've invested a, and relied and, to our detriment, on the city's plans, and I know that the homeowners probably feel the exact same way. They listen to their developers, and they may not have been aware of exactly what was planned for that, that site. I understand. I don't, I don't want anyone to be upset by this development, because it really is a good project, and I really do believe in it. There are controls that we can put on, if there is concern about performance or how it's going to be, how it's going to look, or maintenance, those can be handled in conditions to the ordinance. But we are, we're urging you to please consider this with an, with an open mind, because what it looks like from a developer's perspective, if this is denied again, is that, that this planning commission is going to disregard its comprehensive plan, it's going to disregard staff recommendations, it's going to disregard determinations made by land bank, it's going to disregard the feasibility and market analysis conducted by its own third-party consultants with a chat report, report. It's disregarding our traffic, our market and feasibility studies, our stormwater studies, the availability of services, and I, when I finish up, I would like to distribute this executive summary, summary of our market study, if, if allowed. And then it's also going to be disregarding statements from service providers. I do not envy your position at all. It's tough. It, it is tough weighing and balancing. What is the right thing to do? And of course, I believe, supporting our project, that's the right thing to do. Everyone else here is going to say, no, it is, it is the wrong thing to do. I, like, like I said, I don't envy your position, but you know, it's my job to explain the developer's perspective. And if I may, I would like to...
It just has to be marked as exhibit?
These are, these are, this is the last exhibit you read off. This is just the executive summary.
Oh, it's, who's already read in as an exhibit?
No, it, it has not. That was your letter was the last exhibit.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we can mark this as exhibit forty-five, and this is the developer's market feasibility study.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this study was prepared by CBR.
Okay, that concludes my presentation.
Okay.
Um, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Nolte or Ms. Maloney? Commissioner Peele?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Ms. Maloney, um, I understand that you did communicate with the school district on this, and they, they did say that they had a bond issue that they would be able to do the expansion to accommodate the extra children, possible children. Uh, keeping in mind the development, the expansion will be done, and they'll have the occupancy completed at that point that the construction will be uh, starting or in the middle of it, or at the end of it. How is that going to fit?
Well, um, I think, um, I don't know their exact construction timeline for Mason. Um, based upon um, what I'm hearing from all of my other contractor clients is school projects are full speed ahead right now.
Ms. Maloney, could you speak into the mic, please, they can get you on?
School projects um, are full speed ahead right now because we're shut down, and um, it will, there'll be a partial occupancy. Um, so I don't know exactly what the, it's a top priority project. Um, I don't know the exact timeline of that. When will final certi- if we got approved this month, when would final certificate of occupancy be issued for the apartments? Okay, so it'll be about the same time, but Mason was, was and is a top priority for the Blue Springs School, uh, Lee Summit School District, and I can, as we are continuing the hearing, I can look it up and see exactly what the construction timeline is if they have released it, but I just don't know right now.
Okay, also, uh, as we all know, bond issues don't cover the um, onboarding of teachers, because it's, it's meant for construction purposes only. Uh, obviously, they'll have to uh, hire new teachers, because I don't think that they could take the, the load as it is. Also, my second question would be on the fire district, though. I don't think you elaborated about it. Did you get some confirmation from them and how they're going to handle this? I know that, I think I saw that where the two districts, Lake Bladewana and Prairie, combined. I don't know whether that will help them cover, or if they, will still have an issue.
Sure, um, we submitted letters with our application um, from the, the scho- uh, the fire and police chiefs. Now, the fire, I'm, I'm gonna say this wrong, but um, the fire district contracts with other districts to provide services. And what is the name of that? No, what is the?
Bladewana.
It's a mutual aid.
Mutual aid, okay, thank you. They have a mutual aid agreement and would satisfy any requirements through any mutual aid agreements. And they assured us that this project, that they could serve this project.
Okay, and police as well?
Yes. Uh, although they didn't specify mutual aid, um, the police chief did, or did we get it from police chief? Okay. The police chief um, did elaborate and say, we don't um, overbuild facilities before they're necessary. Um, we understand that development is increasing on the south side of town. We can handle this, um, we're ready, willing, and able, and um, that's what we have.
And this police chief was from what district? From Blue Springs?
Blue Springs.
Blue Springs?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Maloney.
It should be in our packet. Uh, Mike is, are our letters in this packet?
Uh, I don't remember if they're in this packet or, or not.
Okay, they were, they were in the, the prior um, packet, and
I believe they are in the packet that was handed out.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Commissioner Davis?
I, I have a question for Mr. Maloney.
For?
Uh, well, Malon.
Oh, for Mr. Malon?
Malon.
Okay.
Sorry, I'll give it up. If you don't mind, just a moment. If we approve this, she said that we approved this as high density in two thousand fourteen?
The comprehensive plan for this area and the um, the area plan, the specific area plan for this a- uh, this area, um, as part of the adoption of the comprehensive plan, uh, was for high-density residential and mixed-density residential.
But not per saved this piece of property?
It was, this, this property had that, that uh, let future land use designation applied to it, yes. It did, as part of the comprehensive plan process.
But it wasn't rezoned for that?
It was not rezoned at that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Maloney or Mr. Nolte? All right, thank you. Okay. Now, I would like to ask if there's anyone that would like to speak in favor of this petition. Since we're back and forth in a few rooms, I'm gonna give just a, a little bit of time lapse here.
Let me, let me walk out and connect with Matt on that real quick. I'm gonna bring up the map here.
Okay, seeing none, I will now move to witnesses that are opposed. Um, I've got some speaker forms to work through first, I'll work through those, and then if there's anyone else that would like to speak, I will recognize you, I would ask that you try to stay on topic with what the review criteria are and to not be repetitive in, in what your comments are, so. And try to stay under the five minutes. Uh, first is, and I apologize if I say this wrong, Thomas Hintenack?
Hintenack.
Hintenack? I'll need you to be sworn in and then state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, there. Thomas Hintenack, eleven oh five Southwest Conch Way, Lee Summit, Missouri. And I just kinda just wanna talk, I talked the last meeting and everything, and talked about this kinda being the plan as we moved up and built housing, sold houses, and moved along, this was kind of one of the dream areas where we wanted to be. Looking at the original PUD plan, because at the time, the comprehensive plan wasn't really out there, because a plan is, is ever, forever changing. Even the first page of the comprehensive plan states that. It's something to be updated and monitored and, and continuously flows, just like with any other plan. It's to try to help guide a direction, but directions changed, things changed. In two thousand fourteen, when we were looking at our house, in two thousand fifteen, we bought our property to build our house, the original PUD showed single-family, senior, assisted living up towards the front. If we would've known that it was going to be multifamily or high-density, then we wouldn't have purchased there. We would've went over to Lee Summit and looked at other houses that we were contemplating purchasing. But looking at the minutes at the time in two thousand fourteen, when this development took place in two thousand thirteen, the city said, hey, we want high-end housing. We have a need for that in our community. So reading the city notes, reading through everything, that's what we went with. And the plan that was set forth, or the direction through the council and what the zonings were, set forth is what we chose to go with. Kinda going off of the, the proposed developers, hey, if we build this, businesses will come. If businesses currently aren't there now in the current times of COVID, businesses are closing at a rapid pace. I don't think businesses are gonna come as fast as people would like it to. And according to the last meeting, per the same comprehensive plan, is we need to build towards the epicenter of the city, which is the downtown area of the city. You have multiple vacant lots, you have multiple closed commercial industries towards the center of the city that you're trying to strive and bring population to, to help increase that downtown, the heart of the community. And that's where I think we need to focus. In addition to up and down seven highway, you still have multifamily fourteen or greater zoned areas that are still setting free. I understand that the price point may not be the best. The greater return on investment's gonna be for this property, but we already have this zoned property that you, the commission, the city, council, and everybody else has said, hey, here is a good zoned area that nothing's being done with. I get price points. We're all in a business to make money, we all wanna see our investments have a greater return. Also, looking at the price point on rent, at a thousand dollars plus a month for a single apartment, or a single-bedroom apartment, doesn't add up. If for, if your median income per the notes is thirty-five thousand, it doesn't make sense. At a thousand a month, now, and I think last time they said closer to the twelve hundred dollars a month, you're looking at almost fourteen thousand a year when you take out taxes and everything. That doesn't leave much for a person to spend. And then, we don't get into the fact of, when it comes later, if they get this zoning through, are they then gonna come back and say, hey, we wanna rezone for MF fourteen, we wanna rezone for this? Hey, city council, we would like a tax abatement to lower our tax roll. They can say right now, it's gonna bring in a million dollars on the tax roll, but they haven't come back to ask for a tax abatement. They haven't come back to ask for any of that stuff. And I think that is things that are gonna be on the rolls later, because it's all about the bottom dollar. In most businesses, it's the bottom dollar return on investment. So I think you should seriously consider those future evaluations and the promises that were made in the original council meetings back in two thousand fourteen of wanting high-end housing in that area. And I think that's, and I strongly oppose this development based on those facts. That's all I got.
All right, any questions for Mr. Hintenack? All right, thank you, sir. Uh, next form I have is from Doug Kenny. Mr. Kenny, you'll need to be sworn in and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I do. My name is Douglas Kenny, I live at twenty-nine, two oh three East Colburn Road at Gate One, uh, farm out there. Uh, I am the developer of the Estates of Chapman Farms. And I didn't actually intend to speak because uh, I, I oppose this greatly for a multitude of reasons, but I'm gonna start with the one that probably causes me the greatest heartache about it. Is for the last three years, I've been trying to buy this piece of property from the land bank. And has been stated here already by a few people, they might be just a tad bit difficult. So I've had some difficulty with them. But as we voted this down the last time, had we voted it down and finalized it with this developer, the offer that they've already accepted from my, me and myself right now, their extension would've been canceled. And we would be standing here waiting for me to build single-family homes in that place, exactly as it's zoned, nothing changes. Uh, I'd like to bring up that one thirty-one page of your document, because that document's incorrect, because I've spent money already. I put five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in the water retention at the bottom, which staff and a few other people told me I didn't have to do, but I turned out to have to buy easements from the neighbors to the south, and I put in a five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar water retention, it was supposed to cost a hundred grand. Now, the benefits are, I got to finish phase two and phase three. But the, the negative of it is it's all for the Brookside, Brookside Estates, uh, because the water act shed actually goes across that. But if you look at, I think it was, uh, page one thirty-one. It was a real colorful one that had Yeah, the one that held all the lots that were losing. That actually was the original plan that was done in two thousand and four, and it has a whole lot of stuff in there that doesn't exist anymore. But with that retention basin put in, and by not putting in the north entrance on that piece of property, the plat, which I did not bring a copy with me, but I certainly can get it to everybody, you actually lose four lots. You lose two lots down at the bottom, which are right into the basin. And then at the top, and all the way up, all those crosses from left to right there, the only one that exists is Brookside. So the limited entrances on the uh, in, access points, and the entrance to the north does not exist, we do not impact Mason Street at all. So, uh, Mason School Road at all. So it curves and it catches that spot back there, that white spot is kinda part of it. Anyway, bottom line is, uh, as soon as this is uh, voted down, we will start on the process of putting single-family homes in it. I can't answer this question whether it'll be age-limited, but at the end of the day, uh, that's an option. I don't know how feasible it is, I think there's some dis- discrimination problems with it, so I'm thinking it's probably, might not be able to be done, but it doesn't really matter. They're gonna be, uh, I think back when we bought the property in two thousand eleven, twelve, thirteen, I don't even remember now when we bought it, we came before you and changed the size of the homes because the economy had changed. I believe it was twenty-eight hundred square foot housing that was supposed to be on this development. We had that changed down to the eighteen hundred or sixteen hundred, I don't recall the exact number, but anyway, it was a major reduction due to economic reasons. Uh, now, I will tell you economically, uh, this piece of property is worth a lot, and the land bank owns it. It hasn't been on the tax rolls for a long period of time. Like I said, for the last three years, I've been trying to help them get it on the tax roll. I will tell you, we're down to about twenty to thirty lots. We sold over a million dollars' worth of lots in the last six months, uh, which is as much as we sold all of last year. So the fact of the matter is, the economy is a lot better out there. The economy's a lot better everywhere for the housing development. Single-family homes are at the top of the list of houses that are being sold. I think the multifamily question that was put up of apartments and stuff, I think over by price choppers, the ones you guys approved to be built in there that are huge and very, very nice. Uh, it's right there at Forty Highway and Seven, for those who don't know where it's at. Uh, it's right next to commercial property, makes all the sense in the world. It's high-density, uh, that doesn't seem to be a problem. Uh, I can't imagine there was anybody complaining about that. Uh, it meets the needs. I think if this uh, plan that was adopted in fourteen, I think the real question is, the zoning never was changed on it regardless of what the adoption was. So per the records, the zoning was what it was. I think all the people that bought houses in there, that bought them from us, uh, were made a promise, whether it was verbally given or implied that it's single-family. I think when we change the rules in the middle of it, and somebody's invested money, I think that's a bad state of affairs. Uh, I try to keep my word as much as I can, uh, which is always, sometimes I do a good job, and sometimes I fail and it costs me money because I have to keep it. And so at the end of the day, I think this development has all the potential in the world to do great things. The reason they wanna develop it is because the price point's right. But let me tell you what happens to multifamily apartment complexes. I happen to be an investor and I get lots of
If you can kinda wrap up, Doug.
One last point.
Okay.
The point that's been made, which is the danger in this, is I get called all the time to buy, to invest in multifamily apartment complexes across the company. Hedge funds call me. This kind of complex is exactly the kind of complex they put multi-hedge funds into. And they get large returns, and it damages the neighborhood because there's no owners. Ownership is the number one thing that keeps a neighborhood looking good. You have a hundred percent ownership, occupied ownership, you will never fail. When you have rented, you do, so.
Thank you, sir. Were there any questions for Mr. Kenny from the commissioners? Were there any questions for Mr. Kenny from the commissioners? All right, thank you. Next, I have a form from Zachary Goff. Yes, sir.
My name's Zachary Goff. I'm with the law firm Oswald Roman Rubin. I represent DAC Realty DevCo LLC. My address is six-zero-one Northwest Jefferson Street, Blue Springs, Missouri, six-four-zero-one-four. I have a company, or attached a letter that I submitted, which Ms. Summers said was part of the packet, but, and I also submitted our letter that we submitted in opposition to this development in the February twenty-twenty meeting and all the related attachments to that as well. And just at first glance, you know, I certainly appreciate the position the developer, the Airheart developer is in, but it would appear they've just made two changes to this plan from the plan that was submitted in February. They age-restricted the single-family homes and reduced the number of apartments. And the question then before the commission tonight is whether that is enough to overturn the unanimous decision last time to deny this project, to recommend denial of this project. And, and I've attached minutes from the February twenty-twenty meeting, and more or less the letter I attached is very similar to what we submitted back in February because with the exception of the school initiative, the no-tax-increase bond that passed, there is very little here that's changed from the prior submission. And so, rather than going through the points of the, what the criteria are for passing, which again, we just, we reaffirm our objection on those same grounds minus the school issue, but three points stand out from the minutes of the February twenty-twenty meeting. Commissioner Billups pointed out that, in the minutes, that under the PUD, the Estates of Chapman Farms was intended to be the highest-end area within the Chapman Farms development. The PUD intended for multifamily to be across Seven Highway. The PUD did strike that from the across Seven Highway in favor of commercial development. That does not mean there's adequate reason to move the high-density residential development to this spot. The PUD is still in place, and I just feel like there's not a valid reason, I believe the residents of the estates and the developer who I represent would also agree that just because it was struck from one spot doesn't necessarily mean that this is the correct spot for it. Further, from the prior minutes, Commissioner Banks pointed out, the quote, "Promises made should be promises kept." Doug just kind of addressed some of that, but there's really not been a demonstration that sufficient conditions have changed since two thousand and four to the time the first lots were sold in two thousand and fourteen to now, almost all the estate lots, I believe, are just about sold out and, or built out at this point. So, the kind of the time to make these big changes to the PUD and all this stuff was from between two thousand and four and two thousand and fourteen, there was all this time before a resident moved in. It wasn't done, and nor was there necessarily reason to do, to make the change, but right now, you're going to upset the economic conditions for all the residents that own these properties and the estates. And I think that's just a risk, and I think the city and the staff report even acknowledged that it's unknown what the, what the economic result would be to the existing lots. And, you know, economic conditions aren't the only thing that need to be considered. It's quality of life, what did you buy, is this what you paid for, six-hundred thousand dollars, is that what you paid for in South Blue Springs? So, before, you know, the question remains is, are we going to amend the PUD to add an apartment complex where there is not one currently planned? And there were also questions raised at the last meeting about whether there is need for more large multifamily in Blue Springs, and there was a question asked to Mr. Mallon, I believe, about the city's commitment to get to thirty percent multifamily, and at the time in February, it was twenty-eight percent, was, I believe, the number that was put in the minutes. And since then, there have been additional multifamily projects approved, namely, there's one off North Ridge that I know of, North Price Chopper, that's been approved. So, does Blue Springs still need this type of multifamily? Is this still a, you know, the city has gone to great lengths to achieve these goals under the comprehensive plan. What does adding this multifamily to this spot add to the area? And to follow up on Ms. Maloney, some of her points, you know, they knew they had to come in here and amend the PUD and change the zoning ahead of time. That's no easy task, that's not a guarantee, that's not a given. And nobody forced them to try this at this spot. There's older spots for sale up and down, drive up and down Seven Highway, and there are many properties already zoned multifamily that this seems to, would work on.
I'm going to ask you to kind of...
Sure.
Wrap your thoughts up.
One more point, really.
Five minutes.
Yeah, the main point is also, I mean, they're asking you to disregard the PUD in their favor. Our residents are asking more or less to uphold the PUD, to maintain the status quo that they have already invested in. The comprehensive plan is just that, it's a plan, it's not a binding document. The PUD is a statute, and it's recorded, and there's a difference in my mind, and I think, believe in these residents' mind, there's a difference. They bought into this estate's development with the idea that this was going to be a lasting commitment from the city, not to be just overturned when a developer comes in and has an idea for an apartment building, which it's not, it's not a bad idea, it's just, does it belong in this spot? So, and that's, you know, so that's the main thing, you know, the Planning Division, they're going to, they're going to facilitate moving the applications through the process. They do a great job of that. But, it's more than just the technical requirements that we have to look at here and the economic conditions, it's what are these residents losing that just because this didn't get changed between two thousand and four and two thousand and fourteen, and now, why benefit a developer who's sort of the last one in to this party at the detriment of existing invested residents in the city? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Goff? All right. I have another speaker form for Melissa Black. Might need to grab her there, Mr. Mallon. Oh, I think she's coming in, Mr. Mallon. Are you Melissa Black?
I am.
I'll need you to be sworn in and state your name and address for the record, please.
All righty. I do. And my name is Melissa Black. I live, oh, gosh, my glasses keep fogging up. It's like trying to talk. At ninety-three oh eight Southwest Orca Court. And, you know, I always think going last is like the worst, right? Because everyone's already said everything. I am, I am only one of the seventy or so residents who live in the estates. So, really, I can just kind of talk to you basically about how we feel, and you, I think you get a pretty good idea about how we feel about this, right? We're not, we're not happy. This is, this is not something we want to happen. The developer has, you know, what do you get when you put lipstick on a pig? It's still a pig. They came in with this plan to come in with apartment buildings right next to our beautiful neighborhood and, and try to say that this is a great idea, they're going to make money, isn't that great? But, it's, it's not, it's still a pig. And it's not something that works for us, for any of our families, it's most, I'm sorry, I'm really trying to do this. It's most likely going to decrease the value of our homes, it's most likely going to cause issues for us in many other ways, and it's definitely not something that's good for any of us who already live there. And we feel like we've invested our time and effort to live in these, live in Blue Springs, to build there, to, to do this with the promise of, of this environment that, that we decided to do, that we could have gone somewhere else, but we decided to kind of make that promise here. I won't go over any of the other stuff that they already said. We are concerned about the property values, we, I'll tell you what, I'll just say, the bottom line, to the point earlier, you know, they didn't actually listen to us, or they wouldn't have come back, frankly, because we expressed all this to you guys earlier, you listened to us back in February, you all voted it down, we thought, kind of thought this was all over, we all took a big sigh of relief, and we thought it was done, and then we're all back. Here, here is what it looks like if you, if you don't deny it, in our opinions, or at least in my humble opinion, it looks like we're not listening to the residents again, and that we don't care about who actually live here because it's for our benefit to keep that single-family environment. That's what we signed up for, and that's, that's all we want. There's plenty of places for these guys to build multifamily extensions somewhere else. I think if we went through the emails that you all received, I think almost every single one of them were in opposition. And I think if we asked all the people who are here in the other rooms, I think everyone here is in opposition. In fact, if I asked everyone who's here as a... Would you like to stand if you're in opposition?
I can't have you do that, no, you can't do that.
Oh, you can't? Okay, well, I can pretty much tell you, they're all opposed. I can pretty much guarantee that. And I happen to actually know, because I still have a child at Mason Elementary, that it's at over a hundred and twenty-five percent capacity now, right? Improvements are probably three years out. So, anytime you do something like this, it's going to way overstress that school, and that's just one of the minor problems. And I heard a little talk about the walking trail, that's all that, anyway, there's lots of other problems, but that's all. It's just me, just little old me, and I'm just one little resident, but thank you for listening to me, and I guarantee we all don't want it, so, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Black. Any questions for Ms. Black from the commissioners? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that gets through all the speaker forms. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? I'll have a little short pause while we check the rooms and make sure. Yes, sir.
I would like to...
Well, you don't need to fill one out, you can just come up to the podium, be sworn in, state your name and address.
I do. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is John Alexander. I live at eighty-eight oh five Southwest Fourth Street, Lee Summit, Missouri, six-four-zero-six-four. I don't have much else to add except to ask one, really, or make one statement or ask one question. Recently, on Seven Highway, right there at Brookside, a traffic light has been put in, and I hear tonight that the main, the main traffic load is going to go onto Mason School, and so, what is that going to do to the traffic pattern now with that new traffic light that has been put in? That's the only thing I'd like to add, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Were there any questions for Mr. Alexander? All right, thank you, sir. No one else, Mr. Mallon?
I would suggest asking one more time, but it did not appear that we had anybody else.
All right. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of the petition? Okay, saying none, I'm going to bring it back up here for discussion among the commissioners. Oh, I'm sorry, I was going to let the developer, the applicant respond, I'm sorry, I forgot my, my own, Ms. Maloney, and you're already sworn in, so...
Thank you, just a couple of things. I just pulled up from the Lee Summit School District website and their materials on the bond issue. The construction timeline for Mason is July twenty-twenty to January twenty-twenty-two, and it is currently at a hundred and ten percent capacity. With respect to the PUD versus the comprehensive plan, the PUD is of no more...
Could you come a little closer to the microphone, please?
Is not any more of record, it is not recorded any more than the comprehensive plan is. I've got title work on all of my properties, and it's not showing on there, and it's subject to the PUD. So, the only way to find the zoning for this property is to ask the city, and the city has said, as future development occurs, our guideline for this property, for this specific area in the comprehensive plan, we want high-density residential and mixed-density residential. Our, anyone can come in and propose this for this site. Four of the current planning commissioners were on the planning commission when that was approved. Both of our district council members were on the steering committee for that comprehensive plan. To me, it, that sends a message that, and the comprehensive plan has not changed, that, so while the zoning has not changed, the recommended land use, so if someone comes in for a rezoning request, they want to put multifamily on this project, the city looks at the comprehensive plan, which is one of the eight factors, and, and says, does this comply with the comprehensive plan? It's a future land use guide. It is not a rezoning, it is the city saying what we think should happen at this site. And in this case, both of our district council members were on the steering committee for that comprehensive plan. So, I find it, I find it hard for, for us to believe that the city wants anything other than multifamily on this project, on this site. The land bank has said so, the planning commission has said so. And like I, like I've said before, I understand that, yes, there's residents next to it, and I also understand that, being a homeowner myself, there is uncertainty with any new development. Right now, if it's, someone can come in and purchase this property and put commercial on there, put, these houses will be looking at commercial, which is better, commercial or multifamily? They probably say commercial, we say multifamily, and the city has said multifamily through its comprehensive plans and several other policies. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Casey, did you have a question for Ms. Maloney?
I did, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick one, do you, do you at this point have any intention to seek a tax abatement for this project?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Commissioner Peel?
Chair, Council Maloney, you stated that the schedule for construction was twenty to twenty-two, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you tell me the phasing of the apartment complex, when construction starts, I believe it's this fall, is that correct?
All single-phase.
Single-phase. Construction will start in October, hopefully. We've got bats on site, so it, it depends on when we can build due to the protected endangered species. But, plans are start in October, and you said fourteen-to-fifteen-month construction cycle? So, we're looking at middle of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two construction cycle, or school.
Okay, thank you. Also, I have another question. Did you state the Blue Springs Police was in a mutual aid agreement?
No.
They are not?
Not to my, not to my knowledge.
Is there a mutual aid with Lake Ladawanna?
I don't have any idea about a mutual aid agreement for... They didn't bring it up, that was for the fire, that was for Prairie Township, and they didn't tell us who the, the mutual aid agreement was with, but they said that they would handle any additional requirements through mutual aid if they couldn't service it themselves.
Okay, so, but they do have mutual aid with Lee Summit, is that correct?
No. I don't know who the mutual aid is, is with.
Okay, so, we don't know that there's any police coverage at all?
This is in the Blue Springs, two separate things, for police.
Understood.
This is in the Blue Springs Police jurisdiction, and the police department said that they could handle this themselves. There was no mention of a mutual aid agreement. Now, for fire, Prairie Township is the fire district, and Prairie Township said, to the extent that they didn't have the resources to handle it, self-perform, they would have coverage through mutual, mutual aid agreements. And I don't, I don't know who those mutual aid agreements are with.
Okay, my, my contention would be if Blue Springs is tied up, we have no other coverage, but that, that was my concern, but thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Maloney from the commissioners? All right, thank you. Now, I'll bring it back up for discussion among the commissioners on the record. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Casey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I wanted to first extend gratitude to all the residents who are in attendance here tonight, who contacted us to make sure their opinions were known. Uh, it's important that they are here so that we can have these important conversations together, and so that their voices can be heard. That being said, I do plan to support this development, and would like to ask my fellow commissioners to vote in support as well. Uh, we've addressed many of the concerns that were brought forward here tonight, including, uh, the overcrowding of the schools. I have full faith in the district's plan to expand the schools to keep up with growth. Uh, and I also feel that the plan brought forward today is a much better compromise than the one we saw back in February, uh, so I would be supporting it for those reasons. Uh, but this is not the first time we've encountered resistance from neighbors in considering rezoning certain areas of the city to be multifamily residential areas. I think it's important that we on this commission understand not only why we face so much pushback, but also how these fights are hurting our community. The concept of residential zoning, uh, in this country goes back over 100 years, and it began with the primary purpose of keeping black people out of white neighborhoods through the unjust policy of segregation, often citing the risk of declining property value as a primary reason to keep certain neighborhoods white only. Uh, I would hope that everyone here tonight would agree that the policies of "separate but equal segregation" are a great moral failing of the 20th century, and that civil rights leaders like Martin Luther King were right to those and fight against those. Uh, but even though the Fair Housing Act, which sought to eliminate discrimination in housing, has been the law of the land for over 50 years now, Blue Springs remains a city that is 85% white. I believe that the reason for this has much to do with our exclusionary zoning laws. By reserving certain areas of the city for single-family use and forcing all denser housing options into other areas, we are, in my view, continuing the legacy of segregation in our community. Separate but unequal neighborhoods for the rich and the poor among us. Data strongly suggests that concentrating poverty in this way magnifies its negative effects, while communities that focus on integrating and mixing different housing types actually mitigate these effects. We have heard from many residents tonight, but I also urge the commission to consider the voices of the people who can't be here, those who would be the future tenants of this development. People who want to be part of Blue Springs but may struggle to find a place where they can afford to live. In the era of COVID, I hope one lesson we've all learned is just how important our essential workers really are. Whether we are talking about grocery store clerks, teachers, delivery drivers, or first responders, we must acknowledge how necessary these individuals are to a functional community, despite often making much less than the average American. If we do not support developments like this one more often, we are saying that these workers are no longer welcome in our community, because we will be pricing them out of Blue Springs altogether. Additionally, our population's getting older, and many of our senior citizens rely on fixed incomes and must rely on affordable housing options like this one in order to make ends meet. At this particular moment in history, we are, as a country, are currently in deep reflection about the deep roots of systemic racism that still exist today. And we must acknowledge the historic gap in wealth between white and black families, and that that would mean black families are less likely to be able to afford a home in our single-family neighborhoods. Mr. Chairman, I want the residents here tonight, uh, I know that the residents here tonight are primarily concerned about their property values, which is a perfectly reasonable thing to be concerned about. I want to reassure them that the best data we have indicates that the projects, uh, the projects like this are unlikely to negatively affect them. On the contrary, it is my hope that denser, more vibrant neighborhoods will attract even more restaurants, entertainment venues, and other amenities, as well as allow us to build better walking paths, more parks, and a robust public transit system that will bring more value to their homes, strengthen our tax base, and benefit all Blue Springs, all the Blue Springs. And if we're tired of seeing empty businesses along Seven Highway, Mr. Chairman, we need to approve developments like this as part of the solution. It's unfortunate that the system we have in place today is designed to pit the most unfortunate among us against those who are not, who are fortunate. Uh, and I hope that this can be the beginning of a conversation we have as a whole city to address the inherent injustices in our system, and begin working to solve them. Future revisions to our Comprehensive Plan should include the concept of inclusionary zoning to ensure that more development projects in Blue Springs are designed to accommodate people of all income levels. I think that would be a great place to start, and I believe that in my lifetime we'll be asked to face and solve these difficult issues, and I just pray we have the courage to do so. Uh, so I'll be voting in favor, and I would ask the other members of the commission to vote for this as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you for those comments, Commissioner Casey. Any other, Commissioner Veal?
Yeah, um, I don't have a full written speech. Um... I would have been one of those commissioners who would have been here in 2014. Uh, I will be very honest, I do not remember voting in favor of multifamily housing or multifamily, uh, zoning, or whatever you want to call it, in this area. Um, the comments that I made back in February, I would stand behind still. Um, this, there is commercial development here, or is zone for commercial development here. This is an area that is close to the intersection of Colburn and Seven. When commercial development comes to this area, that's where it's going to be. It's not going to be two miles up the road on Seven. It's gonna be at this node, at the intersection, and we need to leave this area zoned commercial. I've said that before. Um, there are places in Chapman Farms and not in Chapman Farms where this would be perfectly appropriate, would be a great development, and I acknowledge and appreciate the fact that you have made the reductions, the two-story versus the three-story, but it doesn't change the fact that I still think this area should remain business as it was originally zoned, and therefore, I would be voting against it.
Okay. Any other, Commissioner Banks?
Well, I remember over 10 years ago, before, right before I got on the Planning Commission, and I don't have anything written, so it won't be too long, that we preached all the time, and our, uh, council is here, so they, some of them were here on this, that we wanted upper-end homes. And it took everything we could do, saying that we didn't want everybody to go to Lee Summit, and so here you are, and now everything wants to get changed around you. And I stand by what I said before, a promise made should be a promise kept. It was zoned single-family with the commercial to the front on Seven. That's what it needs to be. Now, I was here, like you were, in 2014, but it still was not zoned multifamily. It's zoned single-family with a commercial at the top, over by Seven Highway. We're at 74% of the people that live in Blue Springs are homeowners. You want to get into real estate, I'll get into it a little bit. 74% of the people that live in Blue Springs are homeowners. 70% of them own their own home. We're at 29.1% rentals right now. You know, and we're not, don't have a real shortage of rentals, because we've got probably almost 9%, or, so, there's a percentage of rentals always available. But you're in an upper-end bracket, and as far as value, you may not lose value, but the desirability to drive through a complex on Mason School Road to go into your upper-end subdivision is not, I don't think, something that you want to desire and be the, is no more than we wanted a car wash on 70 and I-70, I-70 and Seven Highway. So I'm gonna be voting against this, and I think that I thank them for coming back for some changes, but I still think that we should honor. And as far as disregarding everybody, I'm not, I might disregard everything else, but I'm not gonna disregard my homeowners that live in Blue Springs and stay in Blue Springs. So I will be voting against this.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on the record? Commissioner Veal?
Thank you, Chair. My concern is that I don't believe the school district is gonna be ready for these extra floors. Uh, they're already at 110% capacity, and this project, I understand, is gonna go through 21 and 22, and the completion on this expansion is gonna be in 22 also. But I think there's gonna be people in, uh, the development before the school district is gonna be ready. Um, there has been some talk about if teachers are gonna be required to go back to school, that you're gonna see a lot of early retirements, so we may have an issue trying to even onboard new teachers. So that's, the teaching thing is one of my major concerns, and I'll be voting against it.
Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Veal?
Um, I was out there earlier, and I came to the conclusion that I don't think...
No, no, I am, I am...
I don't think a lot of the homeowners would have built their homes there in that secluded location. So I am strongly in opposition of this, the rezoning. Um, it was intended for upper-class homes, it needs to stay that way.
Okay.
Could I say one more thing?
Commissioner Banks?
I just want, uh, my fellow commissioners to remember that once we rezone this as multifamily, this gentleman, or this project could be sold. If the land is valuable, it could get sold, and then we can't change it from multi-zone, multifamily zoning. So just keep that in mind if we're gonna vote for it. Um, it's single-family now, so, I rest my case.
Okay. Any other comments on the record from the commissioners? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearings. And we will consider item two, the rezoning. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Banks?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the rezoning of Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms,
Zero five.
Uh, what's that? Oh, that's the wrong thing. Sorry, I better get the right. That is the last one. I've got both cases.
I have a motion for denial from Commissioner Banks. I have a second from Commissioner Veal. I'll remind the commissioners, a yes vote is to deny. This will be a roll-call vote.
Planning Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry?
Nay.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Nay.
Chair Graham?
Nay.
No, she's been denied.
So that motion passed, the rezoning has been, recommendation for rezoning has been denied by the...
Karen, did you call mine?
Did I? I thought I did. Maybe not. Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Sorry about that.
That's our gal.
The rezoning has been denied, uh, vote from 10 to 0. Recommendation.
No, no, 7 to 3.
7 to 3.
I'm sorry, oh my gosh, I messed up.
7 to 3. I got y'all messed up.
It's okay, 8 to 0.
Yeah, there was only two no's.
Okay.
There were three no's.
There's three no's. I have Commissioner Casey with a no, and Commissioner Stokkenberry with a no.
And mine was a no.
And yours was, okay, I apologize.
7 to 3.
Okay.
Denied 7 to 3.
Yes.
So we'll send a recommendation of denial to the City Council for their July 20th meeting at 6 o'clock.
7 to 3.
7 to 3.
Okay.
Next item would be the amended planned unit development concept plan. I would entertain a motion for that as well. Commissioner Banks?
Okay, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to deny the amended planned unit development concept plan, PUDC-05-20-7329, for Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms.
I have a motion for denial, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Veal, again, a yes vote is for denial. This will be a roll-call vote.
Planning Commissioner Veal?
Nay.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal? This is to deny.
A yes vote is for denial.
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Nay.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Chair Graham?
Nay.
Again, 7 to 3 for denial. We will... Oh, Commissioner Veal said no, so it is 6 to 4.
Commissioner Veal said no.
Did you say no? 6 to 4, did you say no or aye?
I said nay.
Nay. Scott Casey, Mitchell Peel, Travis Graham.
And Commissioner Stokkenberry.
And Commissioner Stokkenberry. Okay, we're gonna do this all over again.
It's hard with math, it's hard with math to hear, for sure.
Yeah, okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Banks...
To deny.
To deny, and I have a second by Commissioner Veal. Okay, Commissioner Scott Casey?
Nay.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Nay.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey? Oh, I already called you, Chairman Graham?
Nay.
Okay, so that is 7 to 3. That is with Scott Casey, Mitchell Peel, and Commissioner Graham is with a no.
Well, Commissioner Stokkenberry's...
She said yes.
You said yes, okay.
Yes, so I was right.
Okay.
So let's go with 7 to 3.
7 to 3 denial, and we will send that recommendation to the City Council for their July 20th meeting at 6 o'clock as well.
Correct.
Brings us to preliminary plat, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner Banks, you're on a roll, you wanna get going?
Yeah, I'm doing better now. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to deny the preliminary plat, PP-05-20-7330, for Earhart Estates at Chapman Farms.
I have a motion to deny from Commissioner Banks, do I have a second?
I will second it.
Second from Commissioner Veal, again, a yes vote is to deny. Uh, this will be a roll-call vote.
All right. Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Hose?
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Nay.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Nay.
Chair Graham?
Nay.
Same vote, 7 to 3.
7 to 3.
7 to 3.
7 to 3. I think it's the math. So the preliminary plat was denied by a vote of 7 to 3 as well. Um, so that brings us to other business, Mr. Mallon, other business?
Uh, the city has no other business to present this evening. I would like to make the commissioners aware that we will have a meeting on July 27th. We do have some applications to bring forward you that, uh, that evening. So, that is all.
I think your microphone cut out on us, Mr. Mallon.
Sure. Uh, we do have a meeting scheduled for July 27th, uh, so that we will be back in here at 6:30 on the 27th.
Okay. Any other business from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Casey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a minute to say goodbye to everybody. Uh, this is my last meeting with y'all, and it's been a real pleasure. Uh, and, uh, thank you to staff for all of the hard work that you always do here. Uh, and, uh, I just wish everybody the best, and good luck with the future projects, and, thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Casey, for your service. Yes, Commissioner Fairbanks?
I will say the same thing. Uh, this is my last meeting, so it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. Good luck in the future.
Appreciate the service that you gave to the commission as well. Any other business? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.